Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So we're having a little bit of technical difficulties tonight. The mics are all active, so when you turn your mic on, it will be open. When you talk, it will just start, yes. So just so you know ahead of time. And we'll have to do voice votes and/or roll call votes by voice until Patrick gets here to get the system up and running. Our first item this evening is the roll call.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Groudi.
Here.
Alderman Ted Groudi.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a proposed rezoning of 400 Anup Street, 430 Anup Street, and some other parcels associated with that, as well as 460 Anup Street, from I-2 General Industrial District to C-2 Central Business District. Director Schrader, could you give us an update on this?
Thank you, Mayor. So what we have in front of us, again, as Mayor had explained, we're kind of taking a proactive approach to the South Shore, as kind of we've been referring it to, but it does include the new Bonta property, the Sunoco Channel, the Gilbert Paper Mill that was demoed years ago, East Central Law Office, the Duck Pond, as well as the Law Office down there. So with this approach, we're basically, again, taking a more proactive approach to this area. For a long time, they've been zoned industrial, they've been used as industrial, but with the closure of the Gilbert Paper Mill, as well as the closure of the Bonta facility, and now the city kind of putting funds towards the redevelopment of this area with creating a TIF district to help demo the Gilbert site, prepare that for development, as well as assist in creating the new office for East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. So now with the purchase of the Bonta property, staff wanted to, and this kind of stemmed from the Redevelopment Authority, to request that one property be rezoned to C-2 General Commercial to allow for, to be, to meet the comprehensive plan vision and as well as the newly adopted downtown vision plan. So with that, staff is recommending approval, as well as the planning commission, of the staff drafted ordinance to amend Title 13 zoning district for approximately nine properties, of which seven from I-2 General Industrial to C-2 Central Business District, and two properties from R-1 to C-2 Central Business District.
At this point, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? And I'm going to have to ask you to turn the mic on because I can't do it from here. Thanks.
Sandra DeVille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Just for clarification, on the agenda, it does not list the parcels on Racine Street, but I believe the public notice and what was just referred to did include those, which are actually the Peninsula. Am I correct? Because I wanted to address the Peninsula.
They're part of the ordinance, so you're more than welcome to address the Peninsula.
So then the agenda should be modified, correct?
I'm not sure which parcels are which. Director Schrader, do you know?
Because those are listed as Racine Street, and I don't see Racine Street listed here.
So it looks like under the item D-1, the notice for the public hearing, it does just show the properties being rezoned from I-2 to C-2, and it does not list the properties being zoned from R-1 to C-2. But it was included as part of the ordinance, as well as the, within the planning commission minutes, as recommended.
And it's also in the public notice, the clerk noted, so.
Those should be added.
Sure.
Thank you. My first comment is I'm in favor of rezoning these from R-1 to C-2 for the Anna properties that hopefully would prevent that site from developed as anything industrial, including opening up the possibility of warehousing, mini-storage, or anything that would adversely affect new development. My first question is what the, if the adjacent Gilbert site is also zoned C-2, that that would all be inclusive, or if that is a different level of zoning? And then regarding the two Racine Street, I think it was two Racine Street properties that are currently zoned R-1, changing to R-2, I'm sorry, changing to C-2, which is basically the Peninsula. That is where my concern is, is that if that is changed over to commercial property, that could open the door to a public venture such as a restaurant, waterfront bar, anything, and with such close proximity to residential properties on both Riverway and across the Riverway, it could be detrimental to those neighboring properties. Personally, first of all, the C-2, personally, I'd like to see it actually more restrictive to higher-end commercial and not so much residential. But if that is consistent with what the Gilbert site is, you know, C-2 is flexible. I'd really like to see the Peninsula preserved as parkland and not opened out to commercial zoning. Furthermore, I would really like to see that actually deeded over to the park to park, to the city from the RDA, so future generations can appreciate it as a designated parkland, and that it would retain that integrity. Because with it being C-2, it could be a parking lot, it could be, it could really, in the year, not, I'm not saying tomorrow, but in the years to come, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and with it being under the control of the Redevelopment Authority, at some point in time, they're actually going to have money in their budget, they're not going to have to be coming to the council, they are a separate entity, and they could pretty well do with it what they want. So I think to preserve it for future generations and to preserve the residential neighborhood, both directly across the canal and also those across the river, from any adverse commercial venture, while it would probably be very profitable, would be detrimental. And as a side note, now that the city does own this property, I would really like to see the forestry department go in there and inspect the trees that are there. I know there's a lot of dead limbs, and perhaps they could, especially along the bridge, and before winter comes, that it does not become negligence on the part of the city if someone gets injured there by a falling branch. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Sam, could you address the Gilbert zoning as well?
Yeah, so the Gilbert zoning would be from I-2 to C-2 Central Business District. I guess, if I may, address the Peninsula and why that.
That was the next question as well.
Is appropriate. So one thing that we would look at, or the RDA would look at with acquiring this property is likely dissolving some of these lot lines, reconfiguring the lot lines, and in order to do that, you would have to go through a certified survey map process. So in our initial vision concepts and discussions, it's always vision that this area would at some point be turned over as some sort of parkland or publicly accessible area, as well as the notion that the waterfront remains publicly accessible. So the, one of the benefits of rezoning it all to C-2 is you can really work with modifying any property line, should, you know, the city want a trail connected in the front or whatnot. Depending on how that works out or how that lays out, if any of those property lines need to be adjusted, it makes a whole lot easier if it's all under one zoning district.
So item E is public comments and any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Coming back?
Okay, one of the things I forgot to mention, rezoning this or designating this as parkland could keep the rules identical as other parks. I know the RDA at one of their last meetings were proposing a list of rules and restrictions that they wanted to put in place, which may differ from what we have for our current parks, as far as hours, fishing regulations, hunting regulations, and things like that, that may differ from both DNR regulations and state control, but also that we have consistency among ours. So I just wanted to take that into, I think, I think it'd be nice if it was just all consistent. Speaking of the Park Board, one of the things they have on the agenda is to designate some funds for more improvements at Jefferson Park. If, I don't know if anyone recalls, but at the budget hearing, there was roughly $80,000, $90,000 that was designated toward Pean Island. At that time, I requested it be taken away, and my first obligation was that it be directed toward lowering the tax levy. When that didn't fly, I requested that it be put aside in a capital improvement fund for future renovations at the park as seed money. Instead, it seems like this money's burning a hole in their pocket, and they want to spend it quick. I'm afraid what they're doing is piecemeal. While the shoreline improvements are a great improvement, because we had a lot of sinkage and seapoles, it did nothing for boaters, because that riprap is just horrendous. If, when Seafood Fest comes along and the upcoming Jazz Fest, and boaters, there is no way for them to tie up, and that metal riprap is horrendous on boats, especially with the wave action. I really wanted to see a long-term that we could put in a proper shoreline and really do this as a concise laid-out plan. I feel kind of like they're throwing money in different directions, and per their minutes, now they're talking about putting in a new parking lot. Well, a new parking lot before we really build anything. And what if the pool moves, or what if something else moves? It's kind of like, let's get the plan in place, let's get some numbers out here, let's have phases to it, so that we're not tearing up a parking lot in two years because we decide we're going to move something somewhere else. So I just, I would still like to see this money set aside, even though it's so small now, as seed money for a future redevelopment and improvements at Jefferson Park, and a comprehensive plan detailed, with real numbers set aside and real budget, and not just, we're going to throw some here and throw some there and piecemeal the thing. So the only other question I had was regarding the agreement for the inspection services. To me, that seems like a large amount, a 90-10 split. I thought we were trying to get away from that when we had our, hired our in-house building or inspector, and I thought that person was designated as residential. Now it's kind of like, this group is also going to be doing some residential, and to me, the fees are too high. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Report of Department Head, Staff, Consultants. We have the Minutes and Communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive Minutes A through H and Communications I through N.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to help to address, I was going to say Alderman Taylor again, Mrs. Taylor's concerns about the $89,000. I believe that those were borrowed dollars, so they wouldn't be like dollars that you could put towards the levy. So if we didn't use the $89,000, it wouldn't be like some dollars we have to offset the levy, but we are spending, so when we do that, we do borrow, and it does eventually go onto the levy. And that dollar amount is what they're asking, and I'm sure you know, and I'm saying this for the public, is $50,000. It's not the full amount. We've already used some of that money for the Loop the Lake project. Also, too, I share her, I share her concern about a parking lot at this point. I think we need to, I agree that, you know, here we did this study, and it just, we're kind of mishmashing everything. I don't think we're really focusing on what really needs.
Sam, we should probably talk about that during.
Well, it's in the minutes, and so that's why I'm addressing it, Mayor. Thank you. So, and that's my opportunity to address it, so that that board understands and knows that, that I think we need to be a little more comprehensive about it, too, and take a better look at what we do there. I realize the Park Board does make recommendations, and often very good ones, but I'm, I guess I'm concerned about that. I don't know about the need, and then if we do it, if we choose to do something more intense at the park at some point, here we spent this money that we didn't need to for a parking lot. So as far as that, I'm good with any of the other minutes and communications.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo Mrs. Taylor and Alderman Sevenik's comments about the parking lot, and I'll add a little something to that. The Park Department has done some tree studies throughout the community throughout the years, and the largest tree in the city would be affected by that parking lot there, and I think there should be a professional forester come in and see if that impact of that parking lot would affect that tree. That tree probably goes back before the Civil War, and it's a giant. It's a big cottonwood, and I think we should be sensitive to that, especially since it's in a park.
Alderman Sevenik? Do you have a point of order?
If you read the Minutes, the Minutes indicate that that isn't going to be an issue, that they are not.
Well, it didn't, it didn't really indicate that, and it had mentioned something to that, but I don't know if there was a professional assessment to that, you know, sometimes you take up.
Director Tonkate could probably answer that concern.
I know, but it was encroaching on it.
Yeah, it's been made crystal clear to the consultant that the cottonwood tree should stay in any parking configuration, so that's, we're operating under that presumption going into this. So I don't think you should have any worry about the cottonwood tree.
But we didn't have any foresters here, the impact of that, that blocktop parking lot could have any impact out of whatsoever.
We will make sure we stay an adequate distance away from that tree, and we'll have our arborist look at that as well.
Adequate by what? I've just, if you please follow.
Yeah, to make sure the root zone is not compromised in any way, you know, by the parking lot.
Thank you. Also, I ask that the weight restriction on the Racine Street Bridge be addressed, and we know that we had a major fire in the city last, a week ago Friday, and as I watched many trucks from other municipalities drive over the Racine Street Bridge, we know that our ladder truck exceeds the 30-ton limit, and the other trucks using that bridge were probably equal, or if not bigger than, our ladder truck. And in Roger Roth's, Senator Roger Roth's letter, he said he would help us in any capacity he can, and since there is a time gap between the new bridge and this bridge, and it seemed to be kind of a quick fix or a minor fix, I think that it would be well advised for this body to ask the state DOT to put the end-floor beam members of each bascule span that controls, that controls the structure rating. And I think we should ask the DOT that and see what their response is. That way, we're not put in this position that we shouldn't be using the bridge, or asking other, ask other communities when they're coming to our rescue to use that bridge, too. So I think we'll have something drafted, and I appreciate the body addressing this issue. Director Tonkate, item and the treatment plant trail, is that going to become up before this body at some time?
No, it's not scheduled to come in front of the council.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. This is on a positive note, I see Nancy sitting way in the corner back there. Committee on Aging, I'd like to talk about, and I'm looking at F, the Report of Department Heads, Staffs, and Consultants, and I would just like to give you kudos on the Public Health and Health Screening 60-plus Grant, and also like to give you big-time triple, quadruple, whatever, how it goes, kudos on the Healthy Living with Diabetes will be offered starting October 9th, and will run for six weeks at City Hall. And the reason why that is so dear to me is, for many years, I was a diabetic, and with my bariatric surgery last year to help me lose weight, I am now a former diabetic, but I'm still diabetic, because it's like a former smoker, if you don't take care of yourself, you can come back. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. I do want to mention that that particular program is available to anyone 18 and older, not just for people 60-plus, and we are going to have it at the city center.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are eight items this evening. The Common Council minutes to approve from August 6th, the Administration Committee recommendations from August 6th for the First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between the City of Manassas and Safebuilt, Wisconsin, for commercial building services and proposed building permit fee schedule. The Board of Public Works recommendations from August 6th for the street use application for the Labor Day Parade, the street use application for the Bazaar After Dark, the payment to MCC Incorporated for the new street construction and street reconstruction of various streets for $140,808.06, a payment to Pfeiffer Brothers for the Fox River Loop the Lake Bridge crossings, it's a payment of $162,220.24. The Park and Recreation Board recommendations from August 14th to authorize the use of up to $50,000 of undesignated 2018 Park Department CIP funds to be used towards continuing repairs to Jefferson Park shore wall, and the Planning Commission recommendation from August 7th for the CSM lot consolidation for 1116 Lake Park Road. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to separate item 2, which is the agreement, Professional Service Agreement, the item 5, the payment to MCCI Incorporated, item 6, payment to Pfeiffer Brothers, and item 7, the authorization to use the $50,000.
Are there any other items that need to be separated? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the Common Council minutes, the Board of Public Works recommendation for the street use application for the Labor Day Parade, the street use application for Bazaar After Dark, and the Planning Commission's recommendation of the Certified Survey Map Lot Consolidation of 1116 Lake Park Road.
I'm not sure who's who. Alderman Groudi, Tom Groudi? There's a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion to hear that roll call, 8-0.
Item 2 is the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between the City of Manassas and Safebuilt, Wisconsin LLC for commercial building, department services, and proposed building permit fee structure.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Kruger. Any discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. This does not affect residential inspections at all. I thought I was reading the residential fees in here.
Director Schrader?
Part of the whole fee schedule is a, did look at an increase of residential and commercial billing inspections, since neither one had been updated in over 10 years, and we did do internal analysis and provided that comparison within our packet. The 90-10 split, just for clarification, is just for the contracted amount, and that is just for commercial inspection fees as requested residential planning review, backup residential review and inspections, and commercial plan review, so.
I don't know if I got an answer. I sort of got an answer. So you're adding increased fees also on the residential or updated inspections?
It does have an increase within the residential billing permit fees as well.
So to me, the motion reads wrong, then. It's really deceiving. Just so everybody understands, then, I also agree with Ms. Taylor. I think the jump is too high. We should have taken, I don't want to say baby steps, but not leaps and bounds right away, that we should have taken gradual steps. I'll listen to what the rest of the Common Council has to say, and then we'll vote.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman Taylor?
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. This particular inspection, we have Allison that does our residential home inspection. This party isn't going to be doing residential home inspections, are they?
I was trying to help you and you were hitting it at the same time as me.
Foul play. So the only time we actually have our contracted inspector, Safe Built, come into play is if Allison would have an extended period of time off to cover that office hours. So typically, we would just have to give them 24-hour notice and they would just bill us at that hourly rate.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry. You're just all trying to trick me tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, could you please just briefly explain why the jump was so, you know, such a big jump instead of doing it in smaller segments? Was there a reason why that was, it was chosen to be that way?
Mm-hmm. So as I, as I stated earlier, we have not increased our permit fees in roughly 10 years. That is quite a long time to go without any type of permit increase. So anytime, you know, it's, it's the same thing that we were looking at with the budget and the inflation. You know, services go up, the cost for contracting up goes up. When we were first approached by Safe Built, the actual jump was at roughly 46%. And I said, absolutely not. Good luck. So we did get them down to, to discuss that 18% with modifying that, that percentage from an 85-15 back to that 90-10 split. And we did, that's why we did want to make sure we did good comparisons with other communities because we did not want to, as a community that's, you know, it's, you know, known for higher taxes, we did not want to have the highest fees or anywhere near it. We wanted to make sure we're just in line with other municipalities.
And you don't feel that the jump is going to be detrimental to have any negative impact to the city at all as far as permits taken out or anything like that? Do you expect that to still stay constant with this fee increase?
Yes, I don't think this would have an effect on whether or not a business comes in or builds within the city of Manassas.
I'll try this again. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Motion secured on roll call 6-2.
Item five is a payment to MCC Incorporated. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for payment to MCCI Incorporated, contract unit 2018-02 for the new street construction and, well, other various streets in the amount of $140,808.06. This is the first payment.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? See, seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Item six is a payment to Pfeiffer Brothers for the Loop the Lake project. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the payment to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction, contract unit 2017-04, the Fox River Loop the Lake Bridge Crossing in the amount of $162,220.24. This is payment number eight.
Who'd you pick? Tom? Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
He's on the park board.
Ted?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Item seven is the Park and Rec Board recommendation for the undesignated CIP funds. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Grady?
Yes, I'll move for the authorization of the use of up to $50,000 of unrestricted 2018 Park Department CIP funds to be used towards continuing repairs to the Jefferson Park Shorewall.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Do we have discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
Well, four people going to discuss. I'll make it real quick. I took a look at the pilot project that they did on the recommendation of Alderman Kruger. He, I probably wouldn't have known about it had he not mentioned it to me. It looks really nice. I don't know how it's holding up at this point. I'm, the only concern I have is this, yes, I'd like the idea of doing this. I think this is a lot of bang for the buck. I'm concerned about winter and how that's going to adjust and have an effect on that. We haven't had a winter yet go through to see if that's going to be moving, shifting, whatever. But otherwise, if we can do this for $50,000, I'm all in favor of it. Back 30 years ago when we did the shoreline itself, that was a quarter of a million dollars. And back then, that was almost like, you know, maybe over one and a half million dollars, you know, in today's money, so.
Alderman Grady?
I too went down to the park, checked out what has been poured. I'm not really certain that it has to be that wide. It's six feet. I understand there is somewhat of a backwash, and most of the backwash is where the river comes into the park. That's its, it's densest and more intense wave action. They did, when they poured the seawall down on the end of Brighton Drive, which takes a pounding and ice from the lake, it's been there for three years now. There's been no backwash, there's been no heaving, and I don't know how deep they poured that. But I look at this as if you own a home, you fix the roof before anything else with all the leakage and stuff. And I think that this is a great solution to what needs to be done. I just don't know if we have to go six feet out, especially when you get to Peanut Island. What are you going to wrap that in concrete? I went and measured pretty much all the way down the lakeshore, and you can see where the water is affecting the shoreline. Some points it's three and some points it's two. And for the public that comes into our park by boat, it would be very nice for them to be able to step out onto a sidewalk instead of rolling into the gravel and then standing up. So I think it's well worth the investment. We could never afford to do anything else in the future if that shoreline goes. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have some concerns. I think what we need to do is first of all, go through a frost-free cycle on this test area that we have. If anybody knows that, that has ever owned a shoreline, it takes a lot of maintenance. And certainly that shoreline takes on many forces, both hydraulic, wave action, with a good strong west wind, you have three, four-foot waves hitting that shoreline and then the water carrying a good 20, 25 feet onto the shore. And then you face that saturation and both the pressure from the lake pressure and the freezing pressure of the water. So I would like to see before we really go into this, it's certainly a very unique area. It's not just like along the river where you just have the current flowing along the shoreline. From Peanut Island to the boat landing, you have a lot of serious forces that Mother Nature throws at it. So I would like to see a test area before we spend $50,000. It would be nice to have the shoreline fixed up a little nicer. It also would look nice where you had the tie-ups in front of the pavilion just east, just west of Peanut Island to put something else there. As Ms. Taylor mentioned earlier, when you tie your boat up there, it's, it's brutal. And I think we really need to be inviting to boaters since I guess our theme is your place on the water. So I would like to see some sort of pumbers or something put along that shoreline there. And it is a great asset to the community and, but I think we need to really do a test strip first. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor, I think we do have a test area, that 200 feet that they first poured. I mean, I think that's a pretty good indication of how this is going to hold up and how everything looks. I think too, in Brian Tungate's letter of the justification for this, he did mention about not being six feet all the way down. As you got closer to Peanut Island, it would narrow to about a four-foot, maybe even more narrow if we had to. So it's not going to be a solid six-foot down the strip anyway. But I don't know if I can ask for, just send, for Brian Tungate to either add any more to this.
Sure.
So thank you, Brian.
Yeah, just a couple of things just to echo upon what Alderman Grady is saying. Yeah, I mean, the park board talked about this and they weren't anticipating six-foot the whole way down, the whole park shoreline. The reason we went to six feet was that was sort of the estimated splash zone of the, you know, the wave action that comes in. You know, what we didn't want to go is too narrow there and have some washout coming. You know, if we went to four feet there, you have the little chance of water kind of working its way back there. So that's why, that's why six feet was chosen. But I think as you go west, you know, kind of downstream, you can get narrower because I think there's less wave action the further west you go. So and, you know, and I chatted a little bit with Alderman Taylor about this. So you're right, Alderman Grady, I think we have a test spot right there. Honestly, we probably won't get to that much more repair this year, maybe, you know, a couple hundred feet if, if we can work that into our schedule. But the bulk of this work would be next year. And so I think you'd have this freeze thaw cycle, you know, that you'd be able to see what, what, what happens to the one area at least. So we weren't expecting to do really that much more this fall. So I don't know if that, that helps with any of the discussion.
Alderman Taylor?
I have no problem with the width. I didn't even say anything about the width, so don't include me in the four-foot, six-foot, 20-foot, whatever you want to put in, okay? My concern was, yeah, we put this in in June, and this is a test strip. And I would like to see how it performs through the winter, through the frost-free cycle. And just, you know, that's, that's an unusual situation down there with the 30 miles of liquid bagel beating up against that wall there. I think it'd just be money spent wise to hold off, as the director said, and let's see how it performs. And then we'd get a good understanding of what we have there. So that's all I was saying. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Tungate, could you help me better understand how the decisions were made to move ahead with the six feet of concrete or 200 feet of concrete, sorry?
Sure. So I don't think it's any surprise to anybody. We've, we've been dealing with some issues down there with the erosion and wave action over the years. And I guess we just got to the point where the goal there was to stop that from happening. And so we, we addressed this with the park board. We looked at, we talked to our street department folks who do a lot of concrete work. We went and looked at some shore walls over in Nina. So we kind of did our own internal research and came up with a way of, we think it's going to hold up. I, you know, I understand we want to do a test over the winter and that's, that's great. But we're, we're very confident that what we did there is going to hold up. So, so we, it was listed in last year's budget that we did want to, you know, address the shore wall. There are a few dollars in last year's budget. So we did the test area. And the park board, you know, we discussed it several times throughout the summer and they were updated on what we were doing. And so, you know, that's really how we got to where we are today. It's, you know, probably you could classify this as sort of, you know, deferred maintenance. You know, we had, you know, the cap there, the metal cap that was kind of popping and, you know, it's just honestly, it was not, not in very good shape. So we've gone to some efforts already to get that welded down, to get that, that cap tight, watertight. And so that's going to help, you know, the concrete to hold up. And so I think we're, we're doing it the right way now, and we should get many more years' use out of it.
Were other potential options explored, like, you know, strictly going with the hardscape like concrete that appears we're going with now, or a more naturalized shoreline or a combination thereof?
Yeah, I mean, we, a few years ago, we tried a little more softer and more delicate repair down there, if you will, and that did not hold up. And so we really wanted to focus on doing something that was actually going to work. And so that was, I guess, first and foremost in our minds. And, you know, the forces of Mother Nature usually win in these sorts of situations. So we wanted to come up with a design that would really hold up and be, you know, there for many years in the future. So that was, that was our number one goal right now.
And I had conversations with Alderman Grady, Tom Grady, about the shoreline at Jefferson Park. I talked with Commissioner, the park board chair this afternoon. He gave me a, you know, a summary of the history here. It sounds like we've been dealing with this issue for 30 years or so. So have we, you know, consulted with anyone who can evaluate the existing conditions there, both on the shore, in the water, and the, the actual impact that the water has there, and the place where the two meet to help us determine different options and paths forward?
So the biggest, I guess, engineering hurdle, you know, that was, that we were facing was the, the gaps that this cap, you know, there's a cap over this steel bin wall. And so there were a multitude of holes in places where this water could come. It wasn't so much the water coming over the top, it was the water kind of eroding through where the cap meets the wall. And so I mentioned earlier, we really focused on really making that watertight because that was, that's really the issue. And we, you know, we, we have our own crews out there, you know, they've been, they've welded some in May and June, and they've been out there more recently just getting that, that cap back down. And I think that's really going to be critical. That's really, like I said, that's really where the erosion's been taking place.
So I went down over the weekend and looked at it, to which prompted my extra conversations over the weekend. And the first thing that struck me is that we're paving parkland. I understand it's a shoreline, it's also part of the park, and I'm not sure how this additional pavement fits into the overall vision of Jefferson Park that was established by the community. I'm not sure how far along the shoreline this concrete will go. I'm not sure how long, how far it's necessary. I don't think any of us have the answers to that at this point. And I also dug out my Jefferson Park plan today. And regarding shoreline improvements, the summary states that the existing shoreline of the park consists of various revetment types and several sections are in despair. Improvement shall be, should be made to a majority of the shoreline and provide a mixture of vertical seawall. of vertical seawall and less formal treatments moving towards the west. I tend to agree with the comments we heard from the public today that this park vision plan that was created with great input from the community and generated a lot of excitement is slowly but surely turning into a piecemeal renovation that, at the end of the day, Manasha won't be able to be proud of. I support us taking the time to really develop that plan for what we want, for how we'll move forward with these improvements. And be able to tell our community what that process is going to look like and give them an idea of what it will look like at the end. I don't think that renovating a park over the course of 10 years is a great way for Manasha to make a splash and present something that we can truly be proud of on our shoreline. I would like for this concrete that's already been put there to serve as a test, especially over the winter, and see how it holds up to the elements there. After all, we're, we're talking about welding and some concrete, and it seems like the water actually, you know, goes underneath more than it goes over the top. So we have some things to evaluate. And over the course of the next year, perhaps get the advice of some experts on the real conditions of that shoreline. So we have some information and facts to base some decisions on, not allowing, you know, strictly dollar signs to make the decision on what our shoreline is going to look like for the next 50, 75 years. Is the money, although it's not allocated for this project, is the money available at any time?
The money was, will be borrowed for here in the month of September. And technically, the way that most borrowings need to happen is you need to spend the money within two years. So the money could be held intact and then reevaluated, say, next year, and determination done in the next 24 months. But the majority of the funds, it's typically like a spend-down period of time so that you typically spend, I think it's like 10% gets spent, it has to be spent within the first six months. But most of these things, we've already spent, because most of this, I mean, part of the barn was already for 2017. So of the 2018 monies, I mean, as long as we didn't spend the last 25% within the last, within the last six months of that 24-month period of time, we would be fine. So we don't have to spend it all right now if we didn't want to. It can be held, reserved through the, end of the audit process for the end of '18, and then reapplied, you know, when it was determined how you want those funds to be spent.
I understand your answer. I'm not sure how I would accomplish that at this point. We would want to go forward with the borrowing, but not necessarily allocate the funds. So if I were to make a motion, what would that sound like?
Let me answer.
Or Attorney Captain could help with that if...
I mean, right now, that would, you'd be voting on this item here. And I guess if it would be a no vote, that means that you would not be approving this project to proceed going forward. So we still would have the borrowed funds. We keep them reserved until they're unlocked for the specific purpose. But when we sent the application forward to the state, it was intended for improved, you know, park and building improvements. So the question there is, it can't be used for streets, it needs to be kept in this distinction. But it could be reserved.
Okay.
Be held and reserved at this point.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, as Director Tungate had mentioned, you know, when you're, when you're breaking steel welds on a static structure, you must have some tremendous pressure and force somewhere. So that's evident that, that there's something that's happening, there's something that's moving. Director Tungate, what can we expect this year? And how much would we be spending? Or are we just going to leave what we have there as a test, test structure right now?
So I can tell you that $2,500 got you about 200 feet. So that's sort of the financial barometer you can use going forward. So like I mentioned earlier, I don't know how much time we're going to have this fall to, to get it more of the wall. We'd like to because of, from what I'm being told, it's a great filler project. And, you know, we can kind of, you know, when there's gaps in the work schedule, we can send, you know, a crew over there for a week and knock out some, some wall. So, yeah, I mean, that's what's attractive for it going into next year. We'd, we'd plant it into our schedule more, and it's just, it's just a good project for our crew.
I just don't want to get too far out and then, you know, if there's a, a failure of something on it, that, you know, we have to absorb all that.
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to do like, you know, another 1,000 feet or whatever. I mean, we, we might get at a few hundred more feet.
And I noticed in, in the memo there, it had said something about pole holders or something. Would those be fitted into the concrete?
Yeah, those, that idea came up both at the park board meeting and Alderman Kruger mentioned that as well. I think we're thinking about, you know, welding together, and this could be a winter project, a little metal rod holder and bolt it into the, into the concrete. And I think before we do that, we talk to the fishermen that are down there, make sure we're putting them in the spots where they would actually use them.
Because I, I noticed with the cleats that you put on the, on the shoreline, I see people, I use that shoreline a lot, I see people trip on them. And, you know, anytime you put something on, on that close to the water, it's a trip hazard, somebody falls into the water. It's just, it's probably not a good situation. And I think, especially with elderly people, they don't necessarily, what I've been told, look down as much as, as a, a young person. So, and I think those cleats that are for the, for the boaters too should be maybe highlighted somehow, you know, to, just to bring a little attention to them. So just a comment here.
If I could just take a moment maybe to address something Alderman Nichols said. I mean, I think it's a reasonable approach. What she's saying about is you get further west, you, you obviously have less wave action. And it's, I think it's a reasonable approach to, you know, narrow up that wall and have that, have less impact on the green space down there. I think once you get a little bit past Peanut Island, and I know Peanut Island gets, gets hammered pretty good by waves, but once you start getting, you know, just a little bit downstream from there, it's not as bad. So I think you could, you could narrow up that shore wall there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, a lot of things have been said. As far as the trip hazard go, I mean, to me, that would indicate that people are actually walking on the shore wall because it's a nice, flat surface instead of walking on the, walking on the grass. I mean, I agree, the, the overall vision that I thought we had for the area was the lake, boat, traffic, recreation, the whole nine yards. And this does get us in that direction. The whole entire park's going to have to be done piecemeal. We can afford $23 million, all it wants to do it anyhow. I mean, no matter what way we look at it, we do have to do it piecemeal. And there are other communities that have this type of shoreline, and that where it is a concrete walk right next to the shoreline. Now, they may not have the metal shore wall, but the, the ground that, right there doesn't, doesn't react the same as it does with sidewalks in the middle of, in the middle of the city, where you have dirt all around compressing on each other when it freezes and heaving up sidewalks. You, you have an end there with the, with the shore wall, and you don't have that type, I don't think you're going to have that type of heaving problem there. And I'm, I'm, I'm for this. I think it does bring us closer to the overall vision that I thought we all had for the city itself, and that was concentrating on the shoreline. It's going to help out with disabled people having better access to the shoreline. They don't have to go through uneven grass and stuff like that. And I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be highly used. I mean, I, I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just kind of address the issue of funding. If you recall, in a little history, back in budget time, the CIP budget asked for a second bridge to Peanut Island, which I think most of us thought was ridiculous. And so instead of removing the total 89,000, I decided that I think we should keep it in the park CIP fund and make it an undesignated dollar amount that we could use for, like Alderman Kruger's saying, we can't afford $23 million for projects that need updating. And this is one of them that needs updating. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. Brian answered my question then, when it, my concern about the winter. Obviously, we do have a test area that we can look at. I don't want to cheapen this project either by making it from six feet and then all of a sudden you have it only three feet, because people will be walking on this. They may even use this even more than the trail. So it should be six-foot, our standard sidewalk in the city is five feet, and therefore six-foot, to me, sounds good. Should we do other things with the shoreline? I am not sure if this is what Alderman Nichols meant or not, but, you know, we have a hard surface there, and we have to be environmentally friendly also to, to wildlife. And that maybe there might be an area that might have to be opened up for, you know, like, like we did on the Gilbert Trail for turtles and things like that. So, but for this dollar amount, the money will be there. It's, it's an undesignated fund, and tonight, that's what we're asking. We're going to designate it for something. And I think that this is a good project, and I'm in favor of it.
Alderman Grady?
Yeah, I'd also like just to add, though, to the fact that it is our city crews working on this wall and doing, and they came up with $50,000 for that stretch of, of land. I think if we had to bid this out, or we had to go somewhere else, get engineers and everything, I think it'd be close to 10 times that amount. So I think it's a very good bang for the buck.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. Way back when, right after the election, April election, I went out to Riverside, Jefferson. I liked to drive through there, watch the water, watch the ducks, watch the geese. Director Tungate got a phone call from me. And the reason I called him is because at one part of that shoreline, now I'm talking about safety now, and at one part of that shoreline, I was there in my car, and probably one of Alderman Kruger's fishing poles that this little kid had. And of course, he's not paying attention because he's fishing. And all of a sudden, I just look and I'm watching him walk the wall, and he trips. And it's a damn good thing that he tripped into the grass because I all of a sudden went out there right away knowing. And we're just darn lucky that he didn't fall in because that water right there goes straight down, very deep. I know I would have been jumping in, but before I jumped in, I would have been calling 911 rescue, and hopefully it would have been a rescue for both of us. Because that's the way, and I'm looking at this wall, and I totally support this project. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that improvements need to be made, and I agree that there are safety issues along our shore, our shoreline there. What I have not been convinced of is that this is the best solution for the problem. And we, based on my conversations today and what's been shared here tonight about the work that's been done over the years to try and solve this problem, it seems like we have continued, it sounds to me as though we've continued to throw money at something in hopes that it might fix it. And those options haven't worked thus far. And that's the biggest reason that I struggle with concreting our shoreline and spending $50,000 on concrete when we don't know. We, we have nothing to base that on, nothing, except a hunch and something we haven't tried before. And $50,000 could fix a lot of sidewalks or curb in Manasha. So that's why I question this at this point and why I won't, the bottom line about why I won't be supporting this, this recommendation.
Alderman Kruger? Thank you. I just wanted to add on Alderman Nichols' concern about that. I mean, it, it is a shoreline, and no matter what community that has a shoreline, there's going to be an expense to maintain that shoreline. Various ones have rocks, some of them have metal, and every single one of them requires maintenance at some point in time. The wall's been up there for quite a while, and of course, it's not going to hold up forever, and it's going to need maintenance. If you had rocks there, eventually those are going to be moved around, and you're going to have to do repairs on rocks. If it's concrete, it's going to have to be repaired at some point in time. There's no permanent solution for a seawall or a shore wall in any lake that I know of. I mean, it's just part of the, we have a lot of shoreline, which is a, a big benefit, and we have the unfortunate expense of trying to maintain it, a wall at the same time. As I said, it, I think it's a step in the right direction in, in a lot of different ways. I just don't see holding off or a consultant or, or anything like that on how that's going to do anything else besides even add more to the project on top of that. Again, I, I've seen this type of a walkway along shore walls in the areas that I've, that I've visited, driven to, and all that. If, it may only hold for 15 years, and if that's average, that's just something that I think we have to do, we'll have to deal with. But we at least have to make the effort to start moving in the right direction and moving forward into a vision. Because if we, if we keep just not moving forward because of various little things, we're never going to complete that vision in 50 years, much less 10 years. So again, I, I think this is the right, I think this is the right thing, way to address the shoreline. It's a very cost-effective way to address it also. And again, every, every shoreline's going to have issues as far as repairs and costs to them. And I don't think we've actually repaired this one for a long time. So we're actually hitting two birds with one stone on this one, I believe. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Brian, I think we should have two test sites. You said that your crews have gone in and stopped this, these, plugged these holes and fixed the cap on it. And I'd like to see how that holds up with, with a test area showing, with the, with the gravel. You know, this was put in back in the early 90s, and it was projected as a 75-year seawall. And certainly, I know the community made a huge investment at that time. So why don't we do two test sites out here and give us, you know, another 50 feet, 100 or 100 feet of shore wall that's, that's been plugged properly and that we don't have any leakage?
Just so I'm clear, so you're suggesting 100 feet or so of plug the holes and just put gravel in there and see how that holds up?
Yeah, you said, you said that was the problem, and you thought, you said if we didn't do that, just put this concrete, we'd still have problems. You said there were some holes in, in that steel, and that cap wasn't properly fitted or something. So why don't we look at a section where you guys feel like you, you have it stabilized, where there's no leakage? You were saying that it comes from the water and not from the splash. So let's, let's look at a section that, that has it. And when you get down the line in the, in the park, past Peanut Island, that's bin wall at that point. That's not the, this pile-driven steel that is, is fitted together. So that's a whole different animal down the river once you get past Peanut Island. And there is no washing out there or anything like that. So I'd just like to see a test strip here. There seems to be concern that maybe we don't want to have concrete throughout our park or something like that.
Well...
And so let's see how, how it holds up once you guys secure it.
I can tell you from our experience of three years or so ago... I can tell you from our experience of three years or so ago, yes, to a certain extent, what I said is accurate. Yes, there is water working under that wall, but I know that we had some big storm events and that gravel. It wasn't just the holes. There's, I think there's two forces going on here. It's through the holes, and it's on the top, and it's, because that gravel was just blown back, you know? So, I think anything putting gravel back in there, you're just going to end up with what you had there before, if you don't have a hard surface there.
And, you know, we came close to flood stage this year with that event that we had in April, and I was watching the news last week, and you look on the East Coast, these areas that were flooded last week, never had a flood event in the history of their cities and that. So, you know, here, we were close to a flood event, and maybe how that concrete would hold up in a flood event, I don't know. But all I'm saying is, I'd like to see just a section that you guys think you have prepped and ready to put concrete in, and let's just see how that holds up, too, because none of us know the true answer here. And it's the largest inland freshwater lake in the United States, and so it has many unique forces that other communities don't face, too. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven-one.
Item I is action items. First item is the accounts payable and payroll for August ninth through sixteenth. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of August ninth, two thousand eighteen, to August sixteen, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of three million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents.
So, motion is second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications for two thousand seventeen through nineteen. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen licensing period, as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a motion is second by Alderman Ted Grady. Tom Grady will get it. Brian looked right at you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item three is a motion to reconsider Resolution twenty-one-eighteen. There was a motion in your packet regarding why we need to, I mean, a memo regarding why we needed to do this. Alderman Sevanik.
Yeah, we take a vote from the prevailing side. I, I'll make the motion first.
Okay.
I'll move, at this point, to reconsider the accounts payable and payroll check.
No, no, we're on the one before it, the resolution.
Oh, yes, from John's memo, which I think is kind of very minor and ridiculous, but maybe John, after I make the motion, John can explain to the public. But I'll move for the reconsideration of our twenty-one-eighteen, our borrowing from the Board of Commission of Public Lands in the amount of three million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
There is a motion is second by Alderman Ted Grady. John, if you want to explain the reason we have, oh, we can, we can vote on the motion to reconsider, and then we'll, actually, it would make more sense for you to explain why we need to reconsider it before we actually vote. The attorney's whispering to me, we should wait, but it seems to make more sense, so go ahead, John.
Sure. After we had adopted the resolution two weeks ago, I had gotten a voicemail message that I had got from the loan administrator from the State Just Fund Loan Program, and he indicated to me that, he asked, were there no other purposes than what you had included on there? And I said, well, yes, there was. There was capital equipment purchases. And he said, well, back in March, when I sent the application in at the time, he said, well, those words were not on there in March. So, I talked with Clerk Aliazi about this, and he said, well, the clerk is the one that's going to be certifying the actual purposes, and I did not have those three words included, capital equipment purchases on the application. So, therefore, they asked me to request Debbie to have this included back on the agenda, because they were going to send a new paper document, not even electronic. They do everything paper yet, with the actual three words added to the documents, so that the council had to approve it after the letter of the date of the documents that they sent. And if I remember Debbie, that the date was the fourteenth or fifteenth, fourteenth of August, when they sent everything redated with the three words added. So, now, unfortunately, I needed to bring it back to your attention, but I'm just letting you know, being very transparent, they required us to have those three words added.
So, the resolution itself is not changing in any way? It's just that we have to approve it after?
Correct. It's the timing. The timing has to be after they have the, their documents with those three words added onto it, and now it has to happen after August fourteenth.
Okay, so, the motion that's before you right now is just to reconsider it, bring it back on the floor, and then after that, then we would vote on the resolution again. So, right now, there's a motion to reconsider on the floor. If we could have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
I don't know if there's any further discussion on the actual motion that was on the floor. Seeing none, this would be voting on the actual resolution now. If we could, oops, except for Debbie's. Alderman Taylor.
Oh, did someone make a motion to reconsider on number four?
Nope, we're still working on number three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, right now, this is a vote on Resolution twenty-one-eighteen, then? And are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, so if we could have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Okay, item four is a motion to reconsider accounts payable and payroll check. And Alderman Sevanik?
Item three.
Now, we're on item four.
Four.
The one that you wanted to do a moment ago.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong four. Oh, what's with these eyes today? Okay, so anyways.
Both of us should have brought our bifocals.
And I'll go back to what I had said earlier. I'm actually the one that made this motion that succeeded, and I'm going to reconsider that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion?
And then for the payroll check of six-one-nine-three-nine.
So, there's a motion for reconsideration. Is there a second? Or does there need to be a second? There does, apparently Alderman Repala is going to second it, and if we could, did you want to speak on that?
I will, but I.
Do I do the reconsideration vote first? Okay, so if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Alderman Sevanik.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues who supported me on this. I was trying to make more of a point than anything. I really appreciate the work that a number of people do in this community. They go out of their way, they don't get enough credit, and I hope they know who they are and who I'm talking about. But sometimes, we don't understand protocol, and we shouldn't be doing certain things, and that was my objection. But that was the smallest part of this. That was the smallest part of why I wanted to hold this check. The other point is this: We've become a rubber stamp. Accounts payable and payroll, the checks are sent out already, and then we're being asked to approve it. I just find that ridiculous. And I've, and I've not only told our administrative service director about this, but our past administrative service director, and she had said that she was going to follow up and change that, and then, of course, I was gone. But I'm back, and I still think that we need to be more than a rubber stamp up here. So, I think staff and everybody else is just going to have to do a better job of getting these invoices or whatever into John, not have them sit on their desk for a day or two or three or four, but the day they get them, they give them to John, because I don't think that those checks should go out until this body approves it. So, that was my major point about this. So, I am, I made my point, and these people are entitled to be paid because they did the work, so I'd ask that we support the payment at this point, even though they've already cashed the check.
There's a motion is second on the floor. Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure, I'm sure the people, including myself, who voted against this had similar feelings on that, but my question is, has anything changed? I mean, to reconsider it? Has any actions, any movement changed to correct this, or is it just going to be business as usual, then? That's my only concern, because otherwise, why did, why did we even vote, then? I mean, if nothing's going to change, why reconsider it?
Go ahead.
We have, oh, is it James's turn? Go ahead.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I ask is that when other Aldermen, department heads, the mayor, go out and spend money on their own without council permission, I think we should all be treated equal. So, if Alderman Sevanik next week goes out, spends something, and turns in a bill, I think he should get paid for it. So, sometime up here, we don't treat everybody equal, and we all took our sensitivity training. Our department heads are certainly aware of it. Our attorneys certainly aware of it, and there is an equal treatment up here. And last I checked, it was a mayor, council, former government, and there was something of abuse here. And all I'm saying is that I know we don't treat people equal up here, and we should. So, next week, if I go out and spend a bunch of money, I expect the same treatment.
This was a budgeted project.
We can argue that.
The project came under budget, and it was completed substantially the same as what the plans were, the same as we do every project that we do.
Never. I was on this project, I was on this project from the beginning, and I didn't see anything that happened.
And if you're going to accuse me of spending money that wasn't budgeted, I will talk back about that, and I will defend myself.
Good.
Alderman Sevanik.
I got the plan here, Mayor, and what was, what was bought and spent was not in the plan. You might have some wording, but it is not part of the design. I have the designs here, and the thing that we're talking about was not part of it, but I'm not, that's not what this is about, right now. I don't want to get into that. I want to answer Alderman Kruger's question, and I have a lot of confidence in John. John understands, it's, from what I understand, is that it's very difficult to pay people in time, you know? We want to get them paid within thirty days, but my thing is, is that we have to beat it in department heads and city employees, and even the people that we do business with, that if you want to get paid fast, you need to bill us quicker also. So, it's just a process that we just have to change the way we do business, I think, and do a better job of it. I know it's difficult, but I have confidence that we'll work towards it, and that's my goal at this point. I don't, I think, again, like before, we have to take smaller steps to get to that point, and I think we can do that.
Alderman Taylor.
I'd just like to say, for one hundred years, this year, one hundred years, we've been respecting the people that gave their lives at that site. And I think the items that were made, I think, are great. It does give a history, but I don't think in that place. I think there's some reverence to the, what this place has been used for, for a hundred years, and the reverence is paying tribute to people that have given the ultimate sacrifice. And I don't think these items are appropriate for this area. I take a lot of people pastor in my boat, and they ask, well, what does that, what does that mean? You know? So, I think it's, I love using pieces that we have. I love it. So, let's continue to use, use the items we have, but also, I think, I think there's an appropriateness where certain things are placed, and we have a lot of area in the city to do that. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? We'll get there.
Motion carried on roll call seven-one.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance fifteen-eighteen. Alderman Sevanik.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks as though staff is looking to address this issue in that area, and this is what I, I'm hoping that they accomplish, and that at this time, I'll move to postpone this ordinance to the next meeting.
So, motion is second to postpone. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Put this on the next agenda. Item two is ordinance sixteen. Do we have a motion? No one? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move for the approval of O-sixteen-eighteen, an ordinance approving the attachment of territory to the city of Manasha from the village of Fox Crossing owned by Robert A. John and Deborah M. John.
Is there a second? There's a motion is second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item three is ordinance seventeen. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of ordinance seventeen-eighteen, an ordinance amending Title thirteen by making certain changes to the district.
Is there a second? There's a motion is second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. The topic was brought up during the public hearing about those parcels near the Racine Street Bridge that are on the peninsula being rezoned from R-one to C-two. And you, Director Schrader, you briefly addressed why that would be in the best interest of the city and the RDA at this point. Could you repeat those concerns, those answers, and then also speak to what we see for the future of that site?
Yes, so, I think it was, it was noted earlier that this peninsula area, as part of the property that the RDA did acquire this past March, there was concerns that zoning into C-two would allow commercial development along this canal and peninsula adjacent to residential properties. One of the... One of the biggest reasons for rezoning it to C two is to allow a conformance of zoning across those property boundaries. So at some point, when the RDA does choose to move forward with their vision, they can adjust lot lines as needed for the best interest of the public, as well as the development of this property. You know, that property line may move five, ten feet, and if we don't go through with this ordinance today, you would, at that point, be having another ordinance amendment as well as a certified survey map. So this makes it a little bit easier. But with that, the RDA has spoken very heavily that they understand the needs of the public about keeping the public waterways, or the waterfronts publicly accessible, as well as this peninsula area being open to the public and being cognitive of the adjoining properties.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, addressing that part, let's not forget that once a new bridge is put in, the other bridge gets taken out. So that whole area, the four sixty Anup and the Racine Street Peninsula, why we're calling it that, I don't know, but there won't be access to unless you come from the other side, and then you get stopped by a little railroad-type bridge which cars can't go over. So to me, I don't know why we're rezoning any of that property at this point at all. I still, the Bonta site, just because we had a very flashy and very informative and nice presentation by a group that may be interested in putting some residential, that's only addressing a small portion of the building. And I don't know why we want to take away any possible industrial opportunities or areas that might bring jobs to the community. So I'm asking Sam if you really, give me a, sell me on this, because as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't be doing any of this zoning until we have a development in hand. And maybe you can sell it better, but, you know, one thing that was burned into my brain my entire life has been that you don't mess with the comprehensive plan. But whenever we want to nilly lily do anything, we just go ahead and change the comprehensive plan. See, he's the only one laughing or smiling about that because he's a planner, and he probably agrees to a degree with me on that, because a comprehensive plan to planners is their bible, you know, in a community. So, and then also, too, the city, I mean, the, Ms. Taylor brought up about mini storage units. This is just a second part question. What is a mini storage unit zoned at? Isn't that also, is that industrial two? He's shaking his head yes, so you don't have to ask.
Do you?
Is that industrial two?
Yes.
Okay, so, all righty. I thought maybe that was also fell in line with C two, because in a way, it's a commercial. So, okay, then you can just address the bigger picture, why we have to do this whole entire thing at this point when we actually don't have a project at all, at all, at this point.
Yes, so the rezoning of the Bonta property is just a piece of that puzzle. Really, a large portion of this is really protecting the public's interest in the entire South Shore down there. The city does not have any hand within the Gilbert property, and should that property owner decide that one day he wants to build mini storage units, he would come in and submit a plan, and there wouldn't be much that we could do about that. So from that aspect, it wouldn't be very good use of our property. And we do want to be cognitive of those neighboring properties and have good planning throughout this. So if our vision for the Gilbert property is not the industrial or shore, or, excuse me, industrial storage units, it shouldn't be for the Bonta facility either. So with the rezoning to C two, while, yes, at times visions change or items need to be modified and, you know, possibly at a later date, could it be rezoned again? That is certainly an avenue we could approach. However, the C two does allow for a wide variety of uses that was called out for in the downtown vision plan, as well as a comprehensive plan. So it's the most, it's the best aligned with the visions that the public, as well as this common council, have laid out for us with the plans, the comprehensive plan and the downtown vision plan that we have to work with.
So if I could add a little bit to that, as a plan commission member, C two zoning sets forth a vision that is not unlike our downtown area. It sets a vision that we would have underground parking, that we would have a mix of commercial and possibly residential uses. It could be many different types of businesses, but in a way that would be walkable and connected to the neighborhood, and that is what both the comprehensive plan and the downtown vision plan showed. And as Director Schrader was talking about, we want to be proactive, that we're telling developers that this is what our vision is, this is what it's zoned, and we're recruiting people back to our city based upon what those two plans already are. So that's why him and I have been working on that rezoning to match those plans that the public has taken an effort to rein in on over the years. It's probably fifteen years of planning already.
I was going to say, I thought you had your light on, Steve. You're next.
Thank you, Mayor. To answer Alderman Sevenek also, the use of that area actually being industrial, industrial like it has been in the past is, I would think, is extremely unlikely, because most industries now are looking for easy logistics, easy access to main thoroughfares to get their products out and stuff like that. And I don't think there's going to be too many industrial, industrial companies looking to build that far into a city. It just makes their logistics a lot more difficult just to get onto the highways and get out to begin with. Speaking of bridge, that was actually my second question for Sam. On that property that's right now the residential to be brought over to C one, the bridge is actually going to move, and it's going to move more off to the southwest there, and it's going to go right over most of that property, right by the borderlines. I mean, there's not much of a line between that residential and commercial that could be adjusted anyhow once that bridge is placed there. There's, you know, nothing can go underneath the bridge. So I wouldn't, for just calm minds, is it that important to be able to change that over to the commercial and get out of the residential? See, I mean, I don't see how lot lines can be adjusted that much with the bridge going right over the end of the lot line to begin with.
So just for clarification, within your map, both these yellow areas on both sides of the bridge, that is one parcel.
Right.
So there isn't a parcel line right at the bridge line?
Right, right.
So with that, the breaking point is closer to the east side of that access bridge over to that area. And like I had stated earlier, it's not that there would necessarily be commercial development right uptight to that bridge or on the other side of the bridge, but should that property line need to move five feet, ten feet, instead of, you know, just doing that certified survey map and following that process, you would need to do a certified survey map simultaneously with an ordinance amendment, when it is all under the RDA's ownership, and they are very cognitive of the public's visions and things like that, so...
And I do share Mrs. Taylor's concerns about that, because again, it's underneath the RDA. They can pretty much do what they want, and once this is rezoned that way, and things have always happened, that you have committees and all that state that, you know, they're aware of what the public wants, and then still go in a totally different direction. So I'll have to admit, that makes me a little bit leery also, changing that one over to commercial. Thank you.
And to be clear, the owners of the other properties involved were contacted as part of the process and are in agreement that this is the right thing to do?
Yes, I have spoken with, directly with, all the property owners that have the rezoning in front of them, excluding the Army Corps of Engineering, as well as all the properties surrounding the area have been notified. I did not get any communications back from anybody via phone, email, as well as there was no public comment at the plan commission meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed in one of these documents here, it talked about how industry wants to be close to a highway. We're fifteen short blocks away from an interstate and access to it, right down Racine Street, straight shot. So, you know, when they talk about that, you know, that's, these old factories that are in Cleveland, Chicago, Milwaukee, that are way into the interior of the community, and, you know, we got, what, four or five streetlights stopping go-lights to get there. And if they wanted to go through Nino, that's just a mile and a half to Interstate forty-one-two. So, you know, I don't think we should sell ourselves short by saying industry doesn't want to be in our city because of highway access. We have tremendous highway access.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item four is resolution twenty-two. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for resolution twenty-two. This will put the fountain back in order the way it should be.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? I thought he was looking for the paper. I want to stop him.
Sometimes he pushes it, it doesn't move.
Okay.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item L is the appointment of Carrie Lane to the library board. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the mayoral appointment of Carrie Lane to the library board for the term of August twentieth, two thousand eighteen, to July first, two thousand twenty-one.
Is a second and a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we adjourn...
Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I did turn your mic on.
Okay, before we adjourn, I know we had discussed up here as a body the possibility of holding another workshop-type meeting for CIP. Was it for the CIP? Has staff worked on a date yet and possible, so that you have the council members here now, and that way, they can pull out their calendars and work on a good...
We don't have a firm date yet. It'll be in September, though.
All right, just so the rest of the council knows that they're looking for another special meeting.
What half of September are you looking at?
Probably right about the middle would be my guess. We're close, but we need to do some other things if John wants to...
All righty.
But we'll send out a doodle poll or...
Yeah, we don't have to talk about it, will we?
I mean, along with that, there will also be the presentation of the public works facility, so we're going to have representatives from Myron and Greece. Architect will be here also. So it'll be, it's going to be a combination with all of it at one time. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Don't have it on bizarre every hour.
That'd be a great night to have it.
Mayor, if there's no further business, I'll move that we adjourn.
There's public...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, go ahead, Stan.
Because everyone left, so that would have spoke. I'll move that we adjourn.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.